Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Yuculo. I'm the project manager for the Indiana Department of Transportation on this very complicated and exciting project. And I really appreciate you folks taking time out of your schedules to come out here and learn more about our project, as well as giving us some valuable feedback. So I'm going to introduce, we have Mindy and Toby from Parsons. They're our selected designer on the project. So they've been developing all the plans and they're going to give a presentation with all the details on the project and schedule as well. And you may have spoken with some of them already and asked questions. If you haven't had an opportunity to ask any questions, we'll definitely stick around after the presentation to do so. And you can walk around, look at the visuals and again, ask anyone with a blue shirt a question and we'll try to get that answered for you. But without further ado, I'll introduce my.
All righty, thank you guys so much for joining us tonight. Mike already did some nice introductions. You're going to hear from myself tonight. You're going to hear from Toby Randolph down there, who is the project manager with Parsons for this project. And a little bit of what we'll be talking about tonight to give you an idea of what to expect. We'll be talking just about the public hearing itself. This is a little bit different than the public meetings that we held in August. I know we have some repeat faces here. We have some folks who joined us in August at the public meeting, which is fantastic. This is just a slightly different format. We'll be talking about that. We'll be reminding folks who may not be as familiar with Flex Road, what the project is, what we're talking about when we talk about Flex Road. And then we'll be talking a little bit about the environmental impacts. Not a lot of impacts with the project, especially one of this size. You would expect more impacts, but there's a reason why those are kind of lesser impacts. And we'll talk about that. Lot of improvements that we're going to be talking tonight about. And Toby's going to do kind of a deeper dive, share more information on that. We'll be talking about TSMO. We'll tell you what we mean when we talk about TSMO. And then we want to make sure that you understand what next steps are, especially as we move closer to construction, because we are getting closer now. And so we want to know, let you know what to expect there. We're going to end with a verbal comment period and we'll talk a little bit more about that too. So the public hearing itself, we have two public hearings that are being held in connection with the project and in connection with that draft environmental document. Obviously, we're here tonight at Purdue Northwest. They have a fantastic facility hosting us. And then tomorrow we will be in Illinois. So if you know anybody who has an interest in the project and if they weren't able to join us tonight and if they have an interest in seeing in person what's going on, seeing the boards, talking to project team members, that's their opportunity tomorrow night. Both of these hearings are 5:30 until 7:00 with the presentation that we're starting at 6 o'clock. So what to expect tonight? We begin with an open house format. We do have a lot of visuals. Those are just a nice flavor of the project. It's getting up close, seeing what to expect, seeing what those gantries, when we talk about those gantries, what they're going to look like, what kind of messaging you can expect. So you had some time at the boards, you had some time to talk to project team members. Then we go into our presentation. After that, because this is a public hearing and part of the formal comment period, we had a sign up sheet and anybody who wanted to speak tonight could sign up to speak. We have a few people signed up. If you listen to the presentation tonight and if you decide that possibly you want to share comments, we'll go ahead and give you that opportunity at the end as well. We'll make sure that we open up that opportunity. Just want to let you know, you have three minutes for those comments. That usually tends to be plenty of time for folks. If not, I have a handy dandy traffic signal here to keep everybody honest. So at two minutes, you'll get yellow and you'll be over here delivering your comments. And I'll let you know when you have about a minute to wrap up your comments. And then I'll put the red and I kindly ask that you wrap up the comments and remarks as quickly as you can. We won't get forceful or violent or anything like that. We'll let you go ahead and wrap up, but just to keep everything moving along tonight. And I'll call folks in the order that they signed up to speak. This is very important. Sometimes there are questions that folks have as part of those comments. We are not being rude when we don't answer those questions. So when you look at me and I, and I don't give you an answer tonight, that's how these hearings work. We will provide responses to all comments, not just the verbal comments that we get tonight, but all comments received as part of the formal comment period will be included in what's called the final environmental document. And responses will be included in that as well. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that. So tonight, after you deliver your remarks and I say, thank you very much, that's, that's what you're going to get this, this evening as far as the comment. Responses will be in that final environmental document, but also we'll be back to the open house portion. So if you have a question and you're looking for an answer tonight, again, look for the blue shirts, look for the name tags following the verbal comment period. And that's your time to have a really good conversation with members of the project team. Okay, streaming as well. So we also have another option for folks who are not here in person. These are able streamers over here. So the people who are joining us in the streaming option are not seeing everything. They're seeing the slides, they're hearing us speak, they'll hear the comments tonight. So we do also have a streaming option connected with tomorrow's hearing. And we have that information on our website. If people want to take part that way, that is just another opportunity for them. For comments associated with the streaming option, people will be using the Q and A function on their computers. We won't be opening mics, we won't be taking comments that way. All comments count the same. I wish I could give you double credit if you're in person tonight. No double credit, everyone counts the same, no matter how we receive the comment, everyone is responded to the same way. Hopefully, we did a lot to share and publicize this public hearing and what's happening so people know what to expect. We did a lot of project updates. So if you sign up for the Flex Road updates, which I would encourage you to do so if you haven't already, we have eBlast and we also have text alerts that go out. We had some media releases as well. We have flyers around town, both in Illinois and Indiana, about 20 community locations. We've shared those with stakeholders as well. And then we had legal notices in two of the newspapers, The Times of Northwest Indiana and the Daily South Town. We had a legal notice that we did about two weeks out and another one last week. So that we tried to do our due diligence to make sure that folks were aware of this hearing and the opportunity to comment on the project. So I've mentioned it, that formal comment period is important. We are happy to hear from anybody in connection with this project at any time. However, if you want to see your comment recorded in that final environmental document and responded to in that final environmental document, we need to hear from you during this time period. So it doesn't have to be tonight, but you want to make sure you share your comments before the deadline for the formal comment period, and that is Friday, August 8th. So that's important. And again, it really does not matter the channel. All are considered equally, all become part of the document. You'll see responses to all of those. So we do have several comment channels that are included there. Verbal comments tonight, for people, it's, it's not everybody's jam to stand up and deliver verbal comment. That's fine. We have a comment form. We have some extra pens as well. You can complete the comment form, you can leave it tonight. If you want to take a little time to sit with it, you can fill it out, you can scan it, you can send it back to us on the project website. You don't have to have the comment form, you can just give us a comment on the project website. It's indianaflexroad.com. And then you can always reach out to N dot customer service. N dot for you is a fantastic service. They're going to help you out, they're going to get those comments to us as well. Just make sure if you reach out to N dot, mention Flex Road. N dot has a whole lot going on all the time. So make sure they have with clarity, they know that you're commenting on the Flex Road project. All right, so the draft environmental document, if you, when you signed in this evening, if you happen to notice that massive white binder, that is the draft environmental document. It's a dense document. There is a whole lot of information there. So this is over 830 pages. Basically, it is documenting the work of the project team. So all of the analyses, the information, what came out of all of the various processes and procedures and analysis, it's all captured there. So this is documenting the environmental process and the decision-making process. We started looking at options and possible alternatives and how we winnowed down that list and how we emerged with the preferred alternative there. So this documents all the work. It sounds very intimidating when I talk about an 800-page document. But if you go to the project website where it is posted and we'll tell you exactly where to find it. It's under project documents, but we also have banner language there on the homepage. It's all divided out by topic, by table of contents, all of the parts of the appendix are divided out. It's really easy to find the information that you might be interested in and click on that specifically. And if you want to read the entire thing, it's all there as well. And that might be some nice light reading for you. We also have the document at some locations around town. Those locations are listed there. We never want it to be an impediment that folks cannot get online to see the documents. We do have it at several spots where people can find it. So in addition to the locations, we have half a dozen locations where people can find the draft environmental document. We added a couple more with the Lansing Public Library and the Lincoln Community Center. And those locations, all eight of these are going to have this handy dandy comment form that you picked up on your way in is going to be located there. The comment form is going to be located there. Those are going out on Thursday, tomorrow, after we get through, as we get through that second hearing. So those are available. We have a comment box at all of those locations as well. We'll come back on the Monday following the end of the comment period. So that's going to put us at August 11th. We'll come back, a project team member will pick those up. So if you have folks who want to comment, they don't want to get online, that's another channel where they can leave their comments with us. And with that, we are going to move from the hearing process and we're going to talk a little bit about what this project is. And then I'm going to hand it over soon to Toby to talk about some of those improvements. So super important to know what we're talking about when we talk about Flex Road. What the heck is that corridor? How much, how much ground does it cover? So it is a lengthy corridor. It's about 14 miles and that's going to take you from the I-65 interchange over to 394 in Illinois. And it is, it's a very busy corridor. Everybody who uses it knows that. The Borman is the busiest interstate corridor in the state of Indiana. This gives you kind of a typical flavor. You see a lot of traffic, you see congestion and you see a lot of truck traffic as well. So we have about 160,000 vehicles that rely on the Borman each and every day. Of those vehicles, we have about 30% are trucks. So we have a high volume of truck traffic. And I also learned a new stat from a colleague as we were getting ready for these hearings. And I thought this one was interesting. So this is, to me, I had not heard this before. Of miles traveled, Indiana has the highest of any state in terms of truck traffic when you look at miles traveled. And that's out of the entire nation. Indiana is the highest in logging the, the truck travel. So that was a new stat for me. I thought that was interesting, that a lot of those trucks clearly are hitting the Borman. And the other thing to point out here, Borman is, you know, four to five lanes. It depends where you are, most of it's five. But Borman was built in the 50s. It was widened along the way. You know, there's been various, there have been various projects to widen that. You now, when you look at the Borman and you see all of that congestion, you also see right up next to the highway, all of the development. So that includes businesses, that includes homes. You have development that's very close to the footprint there. So it's very easy sometimes for folks to say, it's really busy, can you throw out some more lanes? And you know, give me more room to go. One, the price tag on that would be astronomical. It is incredibly expensive to do that. And also the impacts would be really, really high as well, because you would be talking about taking a lot of homes and a lot of businesses to do that. So working with the constraints that we have and identifying the best solutions for the Borman and how we can make this a better travel experience, we looked at solutions that would largely work within the existing footprint. And that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So purpose and need is very important. That's the why for the project. Have a couple of big primary needs here. We talked about that traffic congestion already. And then we also talked about safety. We have a lot of crashes that happen within this very busy corridor. So that's a, that's a key issue and a big focus for us. So the purpose of the project, we want to improve the efficiency of the system. Not only do we want to make the system better, we want to make it more reliable. We want drivers to know when they're going out and the Borman is part of their commute, that they kind of have a better idea of what to expect, what's going on with traffic, what's going on with congestion? Do they need to adjust their route today? How are they going to be impacted? And then of course, improving that safety is always a key focus of what we want to do. Now, I mentioned we're in the environmental and preliminary design stage. We are moving closer to construction. We're talking today about transportation systems management and operations strategies. TSMO is much easier. That's how you will hear us shorthand it tonight. And we'll be talking more about those TSMO solutions and how those work. And we have a whole combination of those solutions along with improvements at the Broadway Avenue interchange. And we also have improvements at the I-65 south exit. Construction, that's a big one. You're going to see work beginning this fall with the fiber optics improvements. And Toby's going to talk more about that. And then the improvements for the TSMO strategies will start early next year. It's going to be about three years of construction to get everything in place. Environmental impacts, that's a very big deal to take a look at what's happening and how we are impacting folks with this project. What I can tell you, because we are largely staying within that existing footprint, very minor as far as the environmental impacts. So we have less than half an acre, a permanent right of way, less than two acres of permanent wetland impacts. And those wetland impacts are really because of those gantries that Toby's going to talk about. They're going to be located about every half mile. So those impacts could not be avoided, but we do have mitigation to account for that. All of that mitigation, all of the environmental impacts are outlined in that draft environmental document. And you'll find that information in depth. And with that, I'm going to hand things off to Toby to really tell you what's going to be happening on this corridor.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to combine because of the nature of the job and we're not going to be able to add lanes to the outside. We basically combine all our TSMO strategies that we can along this corridor to help improve how this operates. So it, that basically is you start with a laundry list of TSMO strategies and you narrow them down to what works within your corridor project specific. So we've got six of them, basically that we narrowed down, that will be implemented on the project. You'll see ramp metering is one of them. It basically gives gaps or lets traffic know from ramps where the gaps are in the main line so they can get in and merge safely. You see some of the ramp metering around Chicago. We just put some in Indianapolis now. So Indiana is getting used to ramp metering, variable speed limits, where we can change the speed in the corridor, basically tell drivers to, you know, if there's a congestion ahead, to slow them down earlier. So they're not all hard braking at the same time. The study that we're doing in Indianapolis with variable speed limits, they're already seeing a 60% reduction in hard braking throughout a 20-mile corridor because of the, because of the variable speeds. Dynamic lane control, we're going to be able to control every lane in the corridor. Open it, close it whenever we want. It'll be videoed, the whole corridor will, so we'll know what's going on within the whole 14 miles and be able to react to open and closing lanes when needed. Dynamic shoulder lanes, this is the one added capacity that we can do within the corridor is convert that inside shoulder lane to a dynamic lane, which is in the sense, basically, we can open and close it. We're going to convert what we need geometrically. And during the peak hours, we're going to have that extra lane open. So that's your extra fifth lane or your extra sixth lane going through the corridor will be the inside shoulder. We're still looking at different event management strategies, trying to understand what we can do to, if there is an incident out there, how can we get it cleared and cleaned up faster and get out of there so the traffic can get flushed out with the queue? And then the last one is improved signing and queue warnings. We're going to have messages and you'll see on the gantries to provide people that congestion is ahead. You know, how many lanes are open ahead, that kind of thing. A lot of real-time messaging is what this is going to do.
Oh, you cannot, it's mad at you. Oh no, the computer is about to restart. No, stop, snooze, snooze. They're going to let me snooze, oh, come on. Bear with us for just a moment. Okay. Let's. We're not supposed to have any time limits on the connectivity here. So let us. It's really nothing. Give us just a moment, little grace and we'll see if we can figure anything out here. Maybe I'm going to reach one under you. Oh, wait, you moved something. Look at you go.
All right, sorry about that. So this, this is a look at the earlier Matt Mindy had, just kind of a look of everything that's going to be improved. I'll highlight here, I noted the TSMO strategies, but we are doing some improvements. There's a lot of congestion eastbound, Borman to I-65, southbound that exit. And so we are able to do some improvements geometrically within that area that I'll describe here in a minute. So these gantries, they're, they're not your traditional dynamic message signs that you see out there today. Is you're going to be much larger and a lot more detail. So here's just a look at what it looks like and some of the aspects that we will be doing. They'll be placed every half mile so that drivers can, you know, pass one and almost be able to see the next one so they can determine what the plan of attack is. You can see here, the X's, the red X is being lanes closed, open, exits, variable speeds. And then the messaging that we can, we can give drivers. Another look at this is when the dynamic shoulder lane is open on the inside, we can open that up with a certain speed and, you know, lanes open, we got an issue on the outside, et cetera. And even if I go back, we can, you know, we have an incident, we can use the outside shoulder as well. It's going to be cleaned up and improved to, we can use it as well for a lane. But that's only going to be for incidents. But we can definitely open, close lanes whenever, tell them, et cetera. So this overall map is telling us the geometrics that are going on at Broadway. And so right now, when you get on from Grant and you get on northbound to go eastbound, you, that fifth lane there exits to Broadway. Well, we're going to carry that fifth lane all the way over to I-65. So what that's going to do is add capacity, but eliminate a lot of the weaving and merging that's going on between those two interchanges. And in order to do that safely, we eliminate the northbound ramp. Let me just show you that graphic here in more detail. We're eliminating this northbound ramp here in order to gain more space here for merging and acceleration. We're going to combine that movement, you're going to be taking the loop ramp now. So both, both directions are going to get on the loop ramp to get on the Borman now moving, moving forward. So then we have that fifth lane running through here and they come on with plenty of room to excel and decel. And then when we get to 65, what, what's really, really cool here is that we do have the three lanes that can go to 65. It's currently two lanes right now. We'll have the third lane and even that third lane is an option lane. You can go through or exit as well. So that's even a better, better capacity and lane balance. We are bringing the dynamic shoulder lane as well through the interchange as well. So we're going to see hopefully a lot of improvement in congestion and safety through this Broadway to I-65 area. So we're, we're doing the, the project in two kind of buildable units and two phases. The first one's going to be the fiber optics. Basically, it does have a fiber optics out there existing. We're going to replace that, but then also install a whole new fiber optics network backbone along the corridor. So we wanted to get that done, hopefully in advance of the main contract. So that's what's going to start this year at the end of this fall is installing this conduit and all the fiber optic that comes with it and replacing the old one. So this construction will start this fall. Like I said, you'll see minimal impacts to traffic along the corridor when this is going on. Basically, just on the outside shoulder is where all the conduits going to happen. So you, you'll see some, maybe some shoulder closures, maybe some ramp closures, short-term, but that, that's about it for this first phase. But maintenance of traffic on the next phase, the, the main portion of it, we are going to keep four lanes of traffic open at all time. Well, I always say that, and most of the time, we definitely want it during all the peak times, et cetera. We will go down to three lanes at times during the night. And then when we have to put these gigantic gantries up, we're going to have to close the interstate. We want to do that in a 20-minute closure. Any, that's normal for N dot roads. That's how they do anything right now, if they need to do something overhead, et cetera. So that's what we're going to try to do for those closures. On I-65, that exit ramp to I-65 south, we want to maintain those two lanes as well, because we know that's a heavy congested area, so that will be maintained. Then as far as ramps, you're going to see various ramp closures. We are doing concrete restoration on the pavement as well for a five-mile stretch of the job and some of the ramps. So you're going to see some short-term closures on those, some a little bit more closures at Broadway just because of that reconfiguration. But that, that's it, you're going to see and hopefully won't disrupt too much traffic. And you'll get plenty of warning, Mindy will tell you well in advance when this stuff is happening. Local roads, because we're going to be putting that conduit and fiber optic on the outside of the right of way, you're going to have some local road impacts. The bore machine may be sitting there for a lane, et cetera. We're coordinating with all the locals about those kind of, that kind of work happening as well. So Mindy, finish it out.
Sounds good. We'll see if the computer behaves for the rest of this or not. The red bar is there, it's scaring me, but it's okay. Okay, TSMO, we talked about, we're going to talk a little bit more. Toby really went through the strategies, but this is just letting you know that we kind of are throwing a lot at this. We have a lot of those TSMO strategies working together, a lot of flexibility at that. And really what we're doing with that is, as I said, maximizing the efficiency of the system, working within that existing footprint, limiting impacts and also making the most efficient use of our resources. How can we improve the Borman in a reasonable and feasible fashion? So that's what we're talking about with this innovation. And I know sometimes when you hear about new ideas or ideas that are new to us, there's some skepticism. TSMO, while this is going to be the first corridor-wide deployment in Indiana, it is in place in Indiana. Toby mentioned, and in Indianapolis within the past year where they started ramp metering. They also started variable speed limits as well, the hard braking, we've already seen a big impact on that. We have other examples here. I don't want anybody to be concerned that two of the examples happen to be toll facilities. There are no tolling conversations happening in connection with Flex Road. Yes, we have ganries that are going to be used for signage and for information and passing that along to motorists. That is what the point of the ganries is for this project, no tolling conversations there. And you see some other spots as well. And we're going to talk about examples as well. We actually have a section on the project website called Talking TSMO. And one of the reasons why is, okay, that's okay, it's now restarting. If you, we don't need it, we're okay at this point. If you go to the website, to the Talking TSMO section, you're going to see a lot of proof points. It's actually what you see over here with these boards, the really colorful ones that look like an infographic over here in the corner. You're going to see some of those strategies. I'm going to talk through them a little bit because our streaming folks still have their picture. So they're in good shape. So we'll talk about them just a little bit. But for example, in Minnesota, they have ramp metering in place there on, on more than 200 miles freeway in the Twin Cities. And over a year, 2.6 million hours are saved by drivers avoiding delays. So traffic is flowing a lot more efficiently there. We also have drivers in South Dakota who say they know what to expect because of that improved signage and what's going on there. And so that's a nice option for them. When they know what to expect, they can make changes. Barry, you are like a little magician. Thank you so much. Well, Kathy, you are a magician then. I don't know who to thank the most. Okay, beautiful. So you can see here, when we're talking about in South Dakota and people know what to expect, they are making decisions on the routes they're going to take, the travel times they're going to use. And it helps them to be prepared and know what to expect. And you see just in Maryland as well, when you improve efficiency, then you're talking about emissions doing much better for you. Michigan, we talked about that as well. Travel times have been improved there by 45% since the TSMO strategies have been in place. In Washington, we talked about what's happening there with the variable speed limits and the lane control in place. It's interesting, there was also a reduction in weekday crashes. It was a more significant reduction in weekend crashes. And I think the reason for that is through the week, you have drivers who are used to the system, who are on it each and every day, for the most part, driving that roadway. And they have a better idea of what to expect. On the weekend, you have a lot more through traffic. People are moving through the area who may not be as familiar with the roadway. And when you arm them with more information, prepare them for what is ahead, they're reacting to that. And that's leading to. to that. And that's leading to a reduction in crashes and really helping with the safety factor there. But whenever we're talking about TSMO, the big benefits are right there in the green box. It all boils down to safety, reliability, and efficiencies. So that is what we're working on with this project here. Next steps, I'm still clicking my clicker and I have no reason to. This is good. Okay, next steps. We always want to let you know what to expect with the project and where we're headed. So we've already talked about these things, but a nice pictured timeline in front of you can really help a lot. So we're right there in the summer of '25. We do have that draft environmental document that has been released for comment and review. We'll have that final environmental document late this year. Fiber optic work is going to begin this fall and then the Flex Road improvements and those TSMO improvements will begin in the spring. Again, about three years for construction is what we expect. As we move closer to construction, we want to make sure that you know how to follow us. So there are all of the ways to find information. indianaflexroad.com is the project website. Every single thing that you saw tonight, every single board, the handout, the comment form, the recording of the presentation, even including our little like tap dancing around the technical difficulties, all of that will be posted on the project website. We'll also have an overview video. It's about 14 minutes. It's the information in the presentation. It's not the presentation slide by slide. So again, if you have friends, neighbors, coworkers who are interested in this project, if they can take 14 minutes out of their day, they're going to see a project video that we're going to be posting up there very soon. And we also have pretty active social channels. So social media, we use both Facebook and X. You can follow us, 8094 Flex Road, and we'll share a lot of good information. And I will tell you this, we've kept you informed throughout the process of the environmental process and the preliminary design. When construction ramps up, we're still using those same channels, which is nice. We have a built-in audience. People are going to care more when we move to construction because that's when it starts getting real and they wonder how they're going to be impacted. So as Toby said, we're always going to let you know. So when we get to the point of installing those ganries and we're going to have the rolling slowdowns, we're going to let you know what to expect. When we have overnight work, we're going to let you know. So it's a good time if you have not signed up for Flex Road project updates. We really don't pound you with information. We just share the key information that's going to affect your commute, highlights of the project, milestones. We do a quarterly newsletter. So it's a good idea if you want to sign up at indianaflexroad.com. It's a very easy thing to do. And with that, we are going to get very close to our comment period. Before we do that, anybody who is not commenting verbally, I want to make sure one more time that they know the options for sharing comment, comments. That can be the paper form tonight. That can be a verbal comment. You can scan that comment form. You can go directly to the website. You can call NDOT. The number is there. It's also in your handout tonight. Just circle again that date. It's Friday, August 8th. We'll end the formal comment period. Any comments received during that slot, July 8th through August 8th, will be recorded in that final environmental document and responses will be included there. All right. And with that, we are going to begin the public comment period. I have just a few speakers signed up to speak. I will provide that time warning. I'm going to go in order of speaking. I will ask if you don't mind when I call your name, come up to this microphone here so everybody can hear you. And if you'll just start your, your comments with your name, that will be fantastic. If you get to a point where you're at a couple of minutes, I'm going to give you the nice yellow signal and we'll go to red at three minutes. And again, you'll have that warning so you have a chance to wrap up your thoughts. And if anybody has heard the presentation and now you think, maybe I do want to deliver a comment, that's fine. We'll hear you here at the end, even if you didn't have a chance to sign up. So with that, I'm going to give you the order so people know what to expect because we just have a few speakers. We'll begin with Christian Doan, I believe, then Ray Anderson, then Kevin Farthing. So Christian, if you have a comment still and would like to come to the microphone? Okay, perfect. And that's more than fine as well. Ray, Ray Anderson? Yes, Ray?
My name is Ray Anderson. Glad you guys came on. I appreciate you having us meet here. I think there should have been a little bit more notice on maybe local radio stations. The only reason I'm here tonight, I heard it on 1039DX. I think that some other people I talk to know nothing about this. That's why I'm going to move on, but please try to advertise at least maybe on the local radio stations and maybe even a couple of popular Chicago radio stations. The other things I wanted to know is, and I know I can't pose questions, how many are you, are of you live in this region? And I'm talking the Hammond, Gary, Highland, River area that know these roads. We've been here, I've been in business 90 years. I'm third generation. I've lived online 58 years. I know these roads. I know these traffic patterns. What you're having is a bunch of people from Illinois coming through on the weekends and weekdays, going to Michigan or going wherever. I'm not really sure if I, you guys are going to control speed because everybody that's told me, my friends from Illinois, speed limit signs are just points of interest. They don't read them. So I'm not really sure how you can control that. The lane closures, I wasn't sure, said you're going to have various lane closures and what, I don't know how you enforce that because the state police don't do anything and the local police departments aren't allowed to patrol the highways. Say, speed limits, how you can enforce speed limits. Again, that's another thing. They all do 90 mile an hour. On Klein Avenue, the average speed of the car that trucks that are pulling stuff out mill, 75 miles an hour. Now, you know that's not the, mill time is just as bad. In the weekends, they weren't as bad when I was a little kid. Now they're just as bad. You talk about having more signage. I don't know if you guys realize this, but a lot of these truck drivers coming through here can't read English at all. Most of them can't speak English. I know because I sell a lot of parts to these trucking outfits. They don't hire American workers. So I don't know how you're going to get them to know what the heck to read because they can't read English. And as far as the interchange at 65, I've seen them, I've seen trucks being in the left lane, cutting all the way over to get to southbound 65. Or what they like to do is 35 miles an hour from Klein Avenue all the way down to 65 because they're not sure where they're at. So put all the signage you want up. They can't read. It doesn't do any good. What are you going to do on breakdowns? Who's your homework? You don't do so much. How are you going to clear the, the roads? You said you're going to work with the, the towing companies. We deal with all the towing companies. It's a nightmare. They usually end up shutting the highways down. It's not going to help. And most of the lane closures, most of the time, the, the companies that they hired to put these road signs up that say lane closures, I've seen them where like say Klein Avenue, southbound to eastbound Borman, they put the signs at the top of the bridge going from Klein to eastbound 8094, and then just close the road. So get some competent people that know what the heck they're doing. And again, I appreciate your time. I appreciate what you guys do. I thank you for having this meeting. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate your comments. Kevin Farthing?
My name is Kevin Farthing. I own Wathwaugh Towing and Lake Station. We are a major stakeholder in the Borman Expressway, also the Casimir Pulaski, I-65. I just learned, and I believe Toby had told me, that we're not going to have initially quick clearance. It's going to fall or to NDOT and Flex Road, which is fine. That part of the system needs a, it needs a huge overhaul. The incentives, I believe you're probably still thinking about and working on. But I agree with the other gentleman about the non-English speaking aspect of what we deal with every day. It's, it's very bad. It's, it's terrible. But I'm just, I'm really concerned. We're putting a lot of effort, we meaning the state of Indiana and our tax dollars, to improve this road and do what we're doing, which it needs. The, the road is at capacity at 160,000 vehicles a day. But you only need something as simple as a officer making a stop and handcuffing somebody on the shoulder to begin a huge traffic backup. We just worked a big wreck last weekend on Berth Street with a semi rolled over. Every eastbound lane was down to a crawl. Now we're on the ramp from eastbound 94 to North Bur. We are off of the main line, but everybody's gaping. Everybody's looking. Everybody's taking a picture. So I'm just, I'm really concerned about the quick clearance portion of what's going to happen out here. Presently, the state police rotate us through township's. We're in North Township down here right now. I service this area down here. We get on at the 15 mile marker. If we come down to the two, I have to travel 13 miles if the wreck's on the westbound side. They're not making good use of their assets. It was, it was worked differently back in the day. So that part of it needs a revamp. But at the end of the day, it's a great project. We need more lanes. We need more movement. And I'm looking forward to what's going to happen out here. We, we, we do a lot of our work out here. A lot of it's our customers that break down that we tow from the expressway. And probably a bigger portion of that is Indiana State Police work that we do out here. It's us, it's Birds, it's Double T. There's several companies that work out here. So I would like to see some of them out here tonight, but first meeting of this type. So moving forward, I hope we do better and I'm looking forward to what you guys have for us. Thank you.
Mr. Farthing, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. And that will get through our list of folks who've signed up in advance. Is there anybody else who would like to comment and have the opportunity to do so at the microphone? Yes, please. Go ahead. And if you don't mind when you come up, if you could introduce yourself for us, that would be fantastic.
My name is Sian Rakitic. I lived in Indiana my whole life, some combination lake in Porter County. Neither worked in E Chicago or Chicago, my daughter. And I guess it's kind of a comment slash question, but I noticed on, we'll call them case studies for the TSMO, when you were showing the states, I apologize if I missed it. I didn't see anything about the actual location of the state. So like, is it Washington? Is it Seattle? Is it a major metropolitan area or is it a rural area of Washington? I'm curious as to where this has been implemented, how similar the infrastructure is to what we are working with here and how similar the traffic is to what we have here. Again, if I missed that, I apologize. But my curiosity is how similar where this has been implemented is.
Thank you very much. We may catch up with you before you leave. Just get your name for the record. If you don't care, spell it out for us if you don't care. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment at the microphone? Okay. If that's the case, I appreciate everybody taking the time. We will end with an open house portion. So again, if you have questions, comments that you want to take directly to the project team tonight, we all have the blue shirts. We're easy to spot. We'll be back at the boards. We'll be here until at least seven. If you need us longer, we're happy to stick around. We have nowhere else to really go. We're happy to be here. And with that, we appreciate your time so much. Have a great night.